Good evening. It is 6 o'clock and I call this June 15, 2020 Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. Is there any objection? Seeing none, this meeting is called to order. Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the pledge and the invocation, please? The invocation first.
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I messed it up. Let me start again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Wow, I'm nervous. Can someone help me out?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
And justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I just got nervous.
That's okay. We all have those moments.
Like.
It's okay. Public comments. Are you ready, Ginger?
Yes, ma'am. So the first is Robert, and he is on the line.
Okay, go ahead, Robert.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for your service. I wanted to talk tonight about the resolution to support House Bill 426, which is the Hate Crimes Bill. And I want to encourage you to pass this resolution, and I want to encourage the state legislature to pass it. And really, I want to make just one point. And that is that there is a real difference between somebody who trespasses on private property and spray paints on the side of a building Jimmy Loves Sally and somebody who trespasses on a synagogue's private property and spray paints a swastika and says all Jews must die. One of these is a simple case of trespassing and a $50 worth of property damage. The other is an act of terrorism that is designed to take an entire community and make them feel vulnerable. What HB 426 does is it recognizes that when a hate crime is committed, it's not only the individual victim, but an entire community that is the victim. And it is very appropriate for the statutes of the state of Georgia to allow for a tougher penalty in one case versus the other. Georgia is one of only four states that lacks a hate crimes ordinance. And the hate crimes ordinance that was passed by the House of Representatives in a bipartisan vote last year is a good bill. And the Senate ought to pass it as it is. And I thank you very much for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you. Ginger, you want to call the next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Lydia Singles.
Okay, Lydia, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Lydia Wells. Thanks for having me. It has been my prerogative to speak for black lives and the people of color in Dunwoody, who have continued to be harassed racially profiled and intimidated by the Dunwoody Police. Dunwoody continues to applaud themselves for numbers concerning use of force, but that is a mask that covers the continued trauma that people of color in Dunwoody experience from the DPD. I would like to quickly bring attention to an event that happened at Wildwing Cafe before the coronavirus outbreak earlier this year, when the Assistant GM Kevin Porter was approached in his car after he closed the restaurant. Two DPD cops, one of which had seen him in the restaurant while dining there earlier that evening, approached his vehicle. Mr. Porter had on his uniform and had the keys to the restaurant on his person and was still accused of loitering. The cops kept their hands rested on their firearms while harassing and attempting to intimidate Mr. Porter. They brought up that Mr. Porter couldn't do anything about the encounter because they knew the owner of the restaurant, who is no longer the owner since it had gone corporate. After the traumatic intimidation ended, Mr. Porter went back into the restaurant due to fear for his life from these officers. These officers chose not to leave the premises for a prolonged amount of time to continue to try and instill fear in Mr. Porter. I brought this up with Chief Grogan last week, and it has still not been addressed. This leads me to believe that protecting and serving citizens is not of high priority. This tells me that Dunwoody PD is not killing black lives with use of force, but they have no problem harassing and intimidating black lives. If this is not the case, then I'm demanding that the situation be rectified immediately. I also ask that every DPD officer be required to record all instances with their body cams, as well as giving their business card to every person that they stop, even if they're not giving them a ticket. So that in the event that one of your citizens feels racially profiled, they have a name and a time and can go make a complaint. It is incredible to me that so many people of color in Dunwoody have similar stories to this, and there's no one addressing it. I yield my time. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Lydia. Ginger?
Next, we have Ann Hicks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ann. Go ahead.
I just want to first say I agree with Robert on the Hate Crimes Bill and a comparable ordinance. So I just want to comment. I appreciate the time this evening. I had a few comments on a couple of different things. But in the wake of George Floyd's tragic death and the ensuing protests, as you know, many governments are reassessing their use of budget for police. I really don't like the misleading term "defunding police." I think that's very misleading. But I do support a reevaluation, a reassessment of the city's resources in this area. I encourage the city to research and consider creative options such as partnering police with mental health professionals like they do in Sweden and probably many other places. Some communities use the term crisis intervention teams for this kind of integrated approach to addressing systemic crime. So no one wants to get rid of the police, of course, but I think now is the time to look at this significant portion of our budget and just reassess, reevaluate, look at long-term solutions, and be creative. On a related topic, I do support the formation of a diversity task force or perhaps community liaison to better address the needs of minority populations in our community. After attending the incredible prayer, the community prayer event last Thursday, Brook Run, that Lydia organized, I hope and I think that the faith community can play a role. It was so inspirational to hear from faith, all different faith leaders. And there's a lot of overlap. There's a lot of common themes, you know, love thy neighbor, you know, really evaluate and respect everyone and love your neighbor. So I hope we can hear more from the city on that topic in the future. I feel like it's been something I've thought about for a long time. I've done a lot of research and writing on environmental justice back in law school. But I'm just starting to get.
There's 30 seconds remaining.
Back into this topic. Oh, and the last thing, I support your text amendment to Chapter 30, the bicycle use of the sidewalks. I think that's a good compromise. I do support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Ginger, is there anyone else signed up?
We have no one else registered. I do have two hands raised at this time.
Okay, if you'll want to call them. And as a reminder, everybody has three minutes. Feel free to tell us where you're from, and we cannot engage in dialogue. So just wanted to remind everybody. Okay, go ahead, Ginger.
Okay, Joe H., you are unmuted.
Showing is muted on my screen, Ginger.
Yeah, I don't know if we're both hitting it at the same.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Joe, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Hi, I'm Joe Hirsch of Dunwoody. So the city of Dunwoody likes to tout itself for its transparency along with its citizens' involvement. In numerous times, the city has held open houses to get feedback on the design and zoning ideas for Dunwoody Village. The goal of the city has been to engage its residents, so it doesn't appear that just a few elected officials are the only ones whose opinions that matter. So sure, we all get three minutes to share our ideas with city council like I am now. But it's a one-way street, as you know, and there's no interaction or information provided to residents in response to our suggestions. Our city does not hold town hall meetings. We are essentially shut out from interacting with our leaders. But we do have several appointed options where residents can chime in, such as the Alcohol Licensing Review Board, Sustainability Committee, the Planning Commission, the Board of Ethics, the Audit Committee. As you know, those are just a few examples. But in a time where nationwide, there is some mistrust in many communities with police departments, as there is some with our Dunwoody Police Department, it's abundantly clear that our city is particularly lacking in one area of citizen involvement. I call upon our city of Dunwoody to create a citizen advisory board for our police department. Residents in Dunwoody essentially have no ability to create new ideas or recommendations for our police department. An advisory board can conduct research and suggest new policies and review what goes on inside the police department. Because now we have no idea about many important things that go on inside the police department and how decisions are made, unless something, you know, makes it into the news. Our police don't share very much with us, other than their daily bulletin, but that doesn't tell us what's going on with their decision-making. How do we know if the police department has effective punishment for internal matters? Such as, as an example, if a police officer gets pulled over for reckless driving, speeding, and a DUI where he blows a .143 in a breathalyzer at the same time that he was on call for our own police department here in Dunwoody, what is the proper punishment? Is it just five days' suspension? That's perhaps something that should be looked into by the advisory board and not hidden from the public. Remember, participation promotes trust in government. The occasional coffee with a cop program is a nice way to say hello to officers and eat a donut, but it's meaningless. It's a meaningless olive branch to residents.
30 seconds remaining.
Guide and offer real input to our police department. We need to create a diverse citizen advisory board for our police department, where it will help our city and our police, because public trust is imperative. The community can collaborate with our city to build effective policies and improve the legitimacy of our police department. Let's build trust with our police by getting its residents involved. It should not be its own sacred entity without other eyes involved. Again, I call on us to create a citizen advisory board for our police department, and the time to act is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Ginger?
Yes, we have one more person with their hand raised, Betsy C., and I am allowing her to talk now.
Okay, go ahead, Betsy, when you're ready.
So, can you hear me now, Mayor Deutsch?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor Deutsch, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I applaud you all for your efforts, especially this year in making the city of Dunwoody such a shining star in our community, especially Brook Run Park. I happen to be one of the residents of many who reside around the parameters of borders of Brook Run. And I just want to address one issue of whether the city council has made any studies on one of the greatest stressors in life, which happens to be noise disturbances. Now, we all have, we have ordinances regarding loud noises coming from anywhere in the city. But I'm more concerned that I don't want to take too much time this evening. I would like to submit a report at some point to the city council regarding not only the senior citizen, the house that's up by the soccer fields, but the residences that are by the baseball fields. Dunwoody Middle School put in a very loud amplifier system. And I'm on the opposite side along Peeler Road, near where the amphitheater is. Now, the amphitheater is beautiful, but there is, there's no noise barrier there. So when you start to get those amplified sounds, I just don't want this to be like a Chastain Park for all the residents to hear the music and the shouting and the yelling that might occur without making some sort of barrier. The physical building is like a megaphone, and that's what I'd like to send this report, if you don't mind. I don't want to take up too much time of your evening, but I hope you'll take time to read a report showing that I think we could benefit from some type of noise barrier in Brook Run Park that won't be not pleasing to the view, but just help residents that live there. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much. Ginger, is there anyone else?
No, ma'am. That was the last person with their hand raised, but if I'd like to raise your hands. No, ma'am. I see no more hands raised at this time.
We have another, we have another public comment session at the end of the meeting. So if someone decides they would like to speak to us, then we will still be here. Thank you, Ginger. Next up is Chief Grogan with his presentation on police accountability.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How is everyone doing?
Okay, chief, and I'm going to mute, so the stage is all yours.
All right. Well, let me try to share my screen real quick and see if I can get that done. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, it's visible.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes, I was muted. Sorry.
That's all right. That's okay. I just wanted to make sure. So I thought it would be a good idea to speak about a few things related to the police department. And initially, I started out discussing use of force and then had some requests from some members of council. And so I broadened this to talk about police accountability. And I'm going to go through the presentation, and certainly if anyone at the end has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So on June 10, 2020, the city of Dunwoody passed a non-discrimination ordinance. And there were four provisions of this ordinance that directly apply to the police department's mission. The first is that the city of Dunwoody shall develop guidelines for the identification, investigation, documentation, and reporting of hate crimes committed within the corporate city limits of the city of Dunwoody. And this policy has been developed. Second provision was that the city of Dunwoody shall provide training to its law enforcement personnel on local, state, and federal laws involving hate crimes, as well as departmental policies on proper identification, investigation, documentation, and reporting of hate crimes. This training was provided to our officers toward the end of the year as we transitioned from UCR reporting to the National Incident-Based Reporting System. In addition to that, we have our annual training that was scheduled to occur earlier this year, but because of COVID, was rescheduled and will happen in August or September. And we'll include that training again as well for all employees. The city of Dunwoody shall ensure that sufficient resources are made available to the Dunwoody Police Department to develop and implement a standardized system for collecting and analyzing hate crimes committed within the corporate limits of the city of Dunwoody. And the city of Dunwoody has provided all necessary resources for the department. Then lastly, I think I missed one. I'm sorry. And then lastly, the city of Dunwoody shall provide annual statistical data regarding the occurrences of hate crimes and the groups or individuals targeted to the Federal Bureau of Investigation pursuant to statute for entry into the national crime information databases. And this information is reported to the FBI on a monthly basis. Although the state of Georgia has no hate crime statute, as been discussed, the department has participated in reporting hate crimes to the FBI. 2019, we had zero cases, and 2020, we've had one. As a side note, I know it was mentioned earlier by Mr. Whittenstein, Georgia is one of only a handful of states that doesn't have a hate crime statute. And Georgia actually passed a hate crime law in 2000, for those that are not familiar. But the Supreme Court of Georgia struck it down as unconstitutionally vague in 2004. I have supported the passage of a Georgia hate crime statute for many years and was on the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police Board when we first passed a resolution of support. The GACP Board recently passed a similar resolution supporting this passage of this legislation again. I applaud and support our city council for the resolution you have on the agenda tonight. Now I want to move and talk about training. So the state of Georgia requires 20 hours of training each year for each officer. And as part of that annual training requirement, officers must take four hours of use of force and de-escalation training and two hours of community policing training each year. So this particular training is repeated each year. We also conduct firearms training twice a year. And since the North Shallowford Annex Building opened up, we have been able to provide scenario-based training using our firearm simulator. Additionally, we have been able to conduct defensive tactics training at this facility. Since many of our high-risk encounters are with people experiencing a mental health crisis, the department signed the One Mind Pledge with the International Association of Chiefs of Police several years ago. We are now fully compliant with the pledge, having put our entire staff through the eight-hour mental health first aid class. And over 50% of our staff has gone through the 40-hour crisis intervention training. In 2019, our officers averaged 146 hours of training. And of course, a few officers went through the much larger mandate training, which might skew that number just a little bit up. By August 1 of this year, all of our officers will attend the Police Legitimacy and Procedural Justice for Community Relations Training, which is an important training for all officers to attend. Our budget reflects a substantial amount of funds set aside annually for travel and training. These funds are used to provide the best and most up-to-date training available. The certifications achieved, training participated in, and conferences attended are all part of a strategic model to reduce the city's liability while making sure our staff is trained and ready to provide the most professional, fair, and impartial policing services possible. These are just some photos of some of the training that we have gone through at different times. That's a actual person and dragging them to safety. So now I'd like to move to use of force. So we conduct use-of-force training twice a year, and we include taser, handcuffing, pepper spray, and all firearms in this training. De-escalation and scenario-based training is part of this training as well. So there's different types of lethal and non-lethal force. Obviously, officer presence is a form of non-lethal force. It kind of starts at the bottom of the continuum. And then we have verbal commands when an officer is telling someone what they need to do. You have soft-hand techniques. This is when someone places hands on somebody to escort them, to handcuff them, maybe even sometimes to take them to the ground if they're not cooperating. Hard-hand techniques are techniques that are used when you've got a noncompliant or somebody who is attacking the officer. Officers can use these techniques to defend themselves. Pepper spray, electronic control device or a taser, and then, of course, a firearm if necessary. Here's some specifics from our use-of-force policy. It does ban chokeholds, requires de-escalation. Officers have a duty to intervene if excessive force is being used. Officers are restricted from firing at a moving vehicle, except under limited circumstances. Officers can only use the force necessary and proportional to the amount needed to gain control. This can escalate and de-escalate during the same incident and encounter. When possible, officers must exhaust all other means before using deadly force. Obviously, if you could be talking to somebody and somebody pull a gun, and it could escalate to deadly force immediately. Officers are required to give a warning before deploying pepper spray or deploying their taser. In most circumstances, a verbal warning will be given prior to using deadly force, but it is not required. So an example could be a use-of-force situation where somebody's life is in danger, and you don't have the time in order to give some type of warning. But in most instances, when an officer pulls their weapon, they are giving commands to someone, such as drop the gun, drop the knife, show me your hands, or other such verbal commands. And then officers are required to report every single use of force to our department. We have a very rigorous process of review. So what does a use-of-force investigation look like? So first, usually the force is used by an officer. So the on-scene sergeant enters the use-of-force in the system and does the initial investigation. The shift lieutenant, for whichever shift that happened on or division, then conducts a review using the report and a video of the incident. Most of our incidents, since we've been wearing body cameras for the last almost five years, are recorded on body camera video, so we're able to use that to review as part of our review process. A major then reviews the use of force using, again, all the available information, and it depends on which division it is, to which major it is. Then we have a use-of-force, several use-of-force experts, and they will review this use of force as well. Then it goes to the deputy chief, and after the deputy chief reviews it, it comes to me for my review. So people always want to know this. What does the GBI investigate? So for us, they investigate all in custody deaths and all also involve shootings. So that's when the GBI is called in. What does force look like in Dunwoody? Here's a chart that. So the majority of the force incidents involve the display of a firearm or a display of a taser, but not the deployment of either. I think a firearm was displayed about 26 times in 2019 as an example. And then a taser was displayed, I think, 30 times, but only used 10 times. And out of that 10, only six actually struck someone. And then the majority of incidents that involve the use of force are shoplifting, where usually where someone's fleeing and some kind of retail fraud, which is someone fleeing as well, although there's lots of different incidents for that. There's a little chart here that shows the use-of-force incidents that we had in 2019, 18, and 17. And just for perspective, the number of arrests that we made and the percent of arrests where force is used. As you can see, this is certainly a small, small number, and certainly even smaller when you compare to the, you know, 50,000 or 60,000 calls that we answer a year. In 2019, there was one allegation of excessive force, and this was based on someone who said they were handcuffed too tight. This was investigated and was unfounded. Also, in 2019, during our extensive review, we did find one officer who had used force inappropriately, and this officer was counseled. we did find one officer who had used force inappropriately, and this officer was counseled. And the use of force involved a taser. So the subject was handcuffed and was being escorted to a police vehicle. And the subject broke away from the officer and fled on foot. And the officer was chasing the suspect and deployed the taser. Didn't strike the suspect at all. But our policy prevents a taser from being deployed to someone who is handcuffed and running like that because of the danger to the person. So that person was a newer officer and was counseled, and we haven't had any issues since then. Whoops, I'm sorry. Okay, so the next issue I want to talk about is complaints. So the Dunwoody Police Department makes it very easy for anyone to file a complaint against anyone with the department if they so desire. They can do this online, by email, by phone, or in person. We also have, they also have the ability to make a complaint anonymously online as well. When a complaint comes in, it's assigned to a supervisor. Usually the supervisor of the person being complained on, if it's a minor infraction. More serious allegations of police misconduct are assigned to whoever is assigned to do internal affairs investigations at the time. The complainant, and if there's any witnesses, they're interviewed, obviously, a report is read, body camera is reviewed. And then officer is interviewed. A conclusion is reached and communicated to the complainant. And then if the complaint is sustained, meaning it's true, then the appropriate disciplinary action is taken for that complaint. So complaints in Dunwoody, most are related to courtesy violations, and many of the complaints involve, you know, really a dissatisfaction with the outcome, such as someone getting a ticket and not liking it or not liking the fact that they were found at fault in an accident or things like that. Here's a chart that shows the number of complaints we received for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Calls for service and the percent of complaints compared to our total calls for service. Thought it would be helpful to see the demographics of our department compared to the two thousand ten census, Dunwoody, the Dunwoody Police Department is pretty comparable to Dunwoody itself, except in two areas, Asian Americans and females. We frankly don't have a lot of candidates apply at the department in either one of those areas. Although fortunately, we have a candidate in process right now that's a female, so hopefully that will work out. Then lastly, then I'll open it up for questions. I did want to talk a little bit about community engagement. And the majority of people our department interacts with will not have an occasion to file a complaint or be involved in a use of force. Instead, their impression of the department and the services that we deliver will come from the thousands of interactions we have with our citizens and others. We speak frequently about how important each call is to the person making the call. And on each have the opportunity to make a positive or a negative impression. And that's something that's been stressed from the very beginning with with our department. So we have done, I think, a lot over the last eleven years to build those positive relationships with the community through different events, whether it's training that we host, National Night Out, Christmas for Kids, other type of events. We try to listen to the community, be involved in the community, and be a part of them. And so right there, I'll end it and open it up for questions.
Chief, if you could unshare your screen so I'll be able to see everybody. Thank you. Thank you. So if you have questions, I see John's hand up. So go ahead, John.
Thank you, Chief, for the wonderful presentation. Thank you for adding the items that we were discussing as far as the additional things. Can you tell me a little bit about the cameras? We had the cameras in place for a number of years now. What's the policies and procedures as far as when the cameras actually run? I'm sure the cameras in the car work differently than the body cameras. Can you explain the difference between it as far as the retention policy and how that all works on the cameras?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I'll start with the in car cameras. In car cameras are tied in, you know, they're obviously in the vehicle, but they're tied into the lights and siren or to speed. So if speed reaches a certain level, I think it's eighty miles an hour, the camera will come on automatically. That's more for internal controls as well. But also if someone turns on their blue lights, then the camera is activated as well. That's called a trigger. We also have a camera facing backwards into the backseat. So whoever the prisoner is, they get recorded as well in that interaction. Our body cameras, we've had in car cameras since the very beginning of the Dunwoody Police Department. Body cameras, we added four or five years ago. I think it's close to five years now. And the body cameras are activated by the officer. And they're activated, they're required to activate them anytime they have an interaction with the public. So if they get called to a call, and now one call gets flagged down on the side of the road or anything like that, they're required to turn their cameras on. But say if they come to City Hall and they're walking around the City Hall building, you know, going to the restroom, whatever, the cameras are not required to be turned on, but if a citizen walks up and starts some kind of encounter, then they're required to turn their cameras on. We're working with the vendor right now to add some triggers to the body worn cameras so that they'll be in certain situations, they'll come on automatically. And so we're working on that as well, although we haven't had an issue with the cameras not being activated. As an FYI, the cameras are always recording a thirty second loop. And so no matter when the officer turns it on, it's going to show video from thirty seconds before then. And so that thirty seconds will not have any sound on it. But it does, it is continuously recording the whole time. So as far as retention goes, the state of Georgia really hadn't really addressed that until a few years ago, and they've since addressed it. So for for video, say, someone, this is video that there's no perceived value from the video. Say somebody's broke down on the side of the road, and officer goes out, stays with the car, wrecker comes and picks it up, you know, thirty minutes later. That video is retained for six months. So that's the minimum amount of time a video is retained. For traffic stops and certain other encounters, it's twelve months. And then for any crime that's captured, use of force, anything like that is thirty months. And so thirty months is the maximum retention rate. Although obviously, if, for instance, if the city was getting sued and something's taking longer than that, we're going to retain that for as long as this needed for court. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, sir. Can you tell me a little bit about police policies and procedures, and are they public? For all the internal workings of the department, the internal investigation, the things of that nature that you just discussed, I'm sure there's a big old police manual about all the policies and procedures. Is that readily available to the public? And if you don't have it on the website, is it open, subject to open records requests?
It certainly is subject to open records. It's not currently on our website, although maybe in the revamp of it, we could place it on there. Or at least the high liability policies, the one people are most interested in. But it's certainly available for the public.
Okay, something to think about in the near future. And finally, you know, we are very proud of our police force. They are in front of us, they get sworn in in front of us. And I was looking on the website, is there any place on our on our website where the names and photos of our police officers are actually available for review? I know if I go to City Hall, I can go see the big old post with everybody on there from day one and everybody's name. But as far as the officers that are on this force today, is there any way in which that makes sense? I understand there's probably some limitations. If I was the drug officer doing undercover work, maybe I don't want to be on the website. I understand that. I'm just thinking of the the typical police officer, which has everyday interaction with the public. Is that available anywhere right now?
So I think at one point, and I was, while you were asking this, I was trying to kind of remember. But I think at one point, they that contact info and photos of the officers may have been on the website at some point in the past, but maybe through iterations it was changed. I can certainly look into that.
I appreciate you, sir. Thank you. That's my questions. I defer the to the mayor and everybody else.
All right, anyone else have questions? Tom.
Thank you, Lynn. Chief, I really have a question. It's just more of a comment. Obviously, there's been a lot of public concern about the police and policies and procedures and how they work, and I appreciate your presentation tonight. I would strongly encourage anyone that has questions about the Dunwoody Police Department to enroll in the Citizens Police Academy. Myself and Jim Reitlicher did that last year, and it was an amazing experience for me and very eye opening as well. It is very well done by the department. You learn a lot about what our police department does on a daily every single day and the things they encounter. And in one of the, really one of the most eye opening parts for me was the the use of force training and the firearm simulator and having the experience, the ability to experience that firsthand and go into that simulator and deal with scenarios that that the police may face. And so I would strongly encourage any citizens that have any questions at all of our police department to enroll in that and learn a little bit more and educate themselves. I think it would be a great experience for them. And I think the department does a great job with that. So thank you. And that's all I wanted to comment on tonight. Thank you.
Well, Tom, I'm glad you mentioned that. We have a, I think we've advertised, or if we haven't yet, we're about to advertise our Fall Citizen Police Academy class. And certainly would encourage anyone to attend that. I think it is an eye opening experience for most people. I failed to mention one thing, which every year since our first year, we published an annual report on our website, which includes a lot of information about our department, including our use of force and complaints and those sorts of issues. And so it's on our website, so I would certainly encourage anyone that would like to, you know, see that to go to our website.
Hi, Joe.
Thank you. I'm just going to show two things, and then I just have a couple of questions, just to validate for the public's awareness. So first of all, if you go to the Dunwoody City's website and look on the police department, you actually see an org chart. So that's fair, that's pretty good for transparency. So you can actually download the organization chart right here, and you can see where Chief Grogan is, all the chief, different folks under there. So that's 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 a good thing. Now, where does the chief of police report? Again, if report to, go to our website, you can find this org chart as well on the city. So you can see where the citizens, we have the mayor and council, and then it's the city manager. And as you could see, under the city manager is all of the departments, and that also includes the police. So I just want to make sure folks are level set and understand how that structure is and how we all work. We are the voice of the elected, of the, you know, we represent the people, and then we also make sure that that, you know, that their their concerns are valid. You know, as a relatively new city council member, Chief, I appreciate this conversation today. I'm on a journey as well, learning because it's such a breadth of things to uptake. And and I appreciate that we have the overarching themes that I like to appreciate talking about that we will have a further conversations with would be oversight, accountability, and transparency. And and I believe we have those things in place. It's the public perception and making sure that we have that public engagement, that the public understands our processes. And further, for instance, on the Georgia Municipal Association website, they have a posting about police services and the role between elected officials and police, and I quote, "Elected officials should engage in conversations and take steps toward implementing innovative community policing strategies for the purpose of building stronger, safer municipalities." So given that statement, I'd like to further engage my peers and the rest of the the staff in where our council fits in adopting public policies and developing strategies with policing in Dunwoody to make sure the police is informed and they are assured. Look, we have, I was I was a military police in the in the army, enlisted, okay? I spent I spent my first few years as an enlisted in the military police, and I took training in that. And, you know, I believe that it's important that we do that. And I also understand the role of our city council. We're setting budgets, we approve plans, setting policies and adopting local laws. So again, this is more of a conversation, but over the weekend I came up with about fourteen questions. Many of those were answered here tonight. Others are more of a policy thing, and I just look forward to continuing the conversation and make sure that, again, that the public is assured that we're doing the right things, that they're engaged. But, you know, I believe we've got a great police force, and I thank everyone for their service, and I appreciate what's going on, keeping our public safe. So thank you for the time.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Stacy.
Chief, thanks again for the presentation. I would just like to give you the opportunity. I mean, we certainly all know what's going on in the country. What do you tell your officers and looking at your policies, because you certainly had the chance to do it for the past month and presentation? Is there anything that you want to emphasize to us that, yes, we are doing this right? And is there anything now, you know, in hindsight, not really in our city Dunwoody, but you're like, we need to look at that a little bit closer?
Well, I think, you know, we could always, and we should always be reviewing our policies, especially use of force or any other high liability policies to make sure that there isn't anything that we need to change, or, you know, should there be something taken away? Should there be something added? We send one of our use of force experts to a use of force conference every year. There's another one coming up in November. And so it's important for us to get that information and constantly taking a critical look at all of our policies. And so we're in the middle of that conversation right now internally about what we could do to make things better. You know, there's been, I've received lots of emails since kind of over the last several weeks with people asking me questions about our use of force policy and just different questions about how we police, and I've responded to all of these. And of course, I would encourage anyone, if they had any questions, to email me at billy.grogan@dunwoodyga.gov. I'd be happy to answer those questions. But that's a good question, Stacy. We are certainly working and reviewing.
Can I do a follow up? Could I do?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I get that we have great policies. How do you work to make sure that the officer on the street adheres to them?
So we do that by holding our officers accountable for their actions. So as an example, I mentioned the use of force and how we review that. Well, that officer that I'll mention used force inappropriately last year. And that was brought up during that process. And so we hold people accountable. And we're fair, but we do have a set of rules, and nothing can ever you know, we have a department full of human beings, and you can have the best policies in the world, and someone can make a decision in a heave a moment or, you know, for whatever reason, and go outside that policy. But I think one of the things that helps us is we do hold people accountable when they when they make mistakes. Some mistakes are not recoverable, you know, if you do something, you know, so wrong or break the law or whatever it happens to be. But so that's one one way we do that. The other way is having, you know, good policies. We're a state certified agency. So we have, you know, excellent policies. We're one of only one hundred and twenty something, I think, agencies in the state of Georgia that state certified through the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. And so primarily, it's holding people accountable, reviewing our policies, and making sure that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that answer.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So, Chief, a thousand years ago, it seems like you and I had a discussion about how you would have handled a situation that was happening somewhere else in the United States. And sort of piggybacking on Stacy's question, which is when these situations occur, uh, that, that are in the national spotlight, do you or your director, Deputy Chief Barnes, talk to the officers that are on the street about it and bring it up as a teaching moment?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a good point, Lynn. Uh, when there is something that happens, usually, one of our, uh, use of force experts, or even just the supervisor, will share that. It's talked about at roll call and discussed. We discuss it as a, uh, we have a staff meeting with supervisors once a month. And in many cases, we'll, we've, in the past, we've watched videos, uh, of encounters like this. What can we learn? How do, you know, how did the officer handle it? What could he have done better? Uh, and so we try to learn from those kind of mistakes that happen somewhere else, so that we don't repeat those mistakes. And so we can learn from them. So we certainly do that.
And is, is, again, sort of piggybacking on Stacy's questions, is there something else you need for us, from us? So, for example, we, uh, help our officers continue their educations and earn degrees. Uh, is there additional training? Like, do we need more, uh, officer certified in, uh, anything that you need our help with?
Uh, you know, I don't think so. The council's been very good about providing the resources that we need, uh, so that we can get officer certified in the different, uh, things that we need them certified in. Uh, we're able to continue with recertifications with our, uh, our training budget. And so, uh, you know, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that, uh, is a need that's unmet right now. Uh, you never know what the future holds, but as of right now, uh, we're, we're good.
Right. So, um, I think that's it for me. Does anybody else have anything? I appreciate your time, Chief. And also, um, like you, I have received a couple dozen emails in the last few weeks, and I have CC'd you on every response, and I know that you have responded to everyone. If I missed you somehow, and you're out there listening, please resend your email. It was not intentional. Um, and I appreciate, uh, the time you spent speaking to me in the last few weeks on the subject. So.
You're, you're, you're very welcome. And I would like to end by just saying I'm very proud of the men and women of the Dunwoody Police Department. They do an exceptional job. And, you know, it's probably as difficult right now to be a police officer as it has been in my entire thirty-eight-year career. So.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I was going to say how much we appreciate their service.
Thank you.
And anybody else? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right. We are on to the consent agenda. I'm not going to read it, but if anybody has any questions on any of the items, please signify by raising your hand. All right. Move to approve from John.
Second.
Second by Pam. Uh, so, um, all in favor? Oh, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Any questions? Nothing? Okay. Um, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Sharon, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Moving on to business items now. We have a resolution, uh, calling for legislature to pass the hate crimes bill. Mayor, do you want me to just read the caption of that and let you speak to it?
Uh, you can. Do you want, do you, that's fine. That's when you can read the caption, and I'll speak to it. So, do we need to, oh, go ahead, Sharon.
I'm sorry.
We need to read the whole resolution?
That's up to you, Mayor. Totally up to you.
Go ahead, and if you don't mind, just read the whole resolution.
Okay. Okay. A resolution urging the Georgia Senate to enact House Bill four twenty-six when the Georgia General Assembly reconvened, reconvenes in mid-June twenty twenty, and for Governor Kemp to immediately sign House Bill four twenty-six into law upon its enactment. Whereas criminal offenses occur throughout the United States on a daily basis called hate crimes, where persons are victimized because of their immutable characteristics such as race, religion, or sexual orientation. And whereas hate crimes target victims simply for who they are, and all that matters to the assailant is if the victim appears to be of a particular race, religion, or other group. And whereas in these crimes, violence is not used as a means for victim compliance, rather inflicting maximum violence is the goal. And whereas because hate crime victims are interchangeable and random, these crimes terrorize the entire victims' community, and often lead to similarly terrorizing retaliatory hate crimes against perpetrators' community. And whereas laws that provide enhanced penalties for criminals who commit hate crimes are a way for society to recognize that these crime strikes special fear within victimized groups, pregnant communities, and tear at the very fabric of our democratic way of life. Whereas there can only be a hate crime if an underlying criminal act is committed. And whereas in nineteen ninety-three, the U.S. Supreme Court unanimously ruled that hate crime penalty enhancement laws are constitutional, constitutional, and do not punish speech. And whereas the FBI's twenty eighteen hate crime statistics, the most recent, reflect that local law enforcement agencies, agencies reported seven thousand one hundred and twenty hate crimes to the FBI compared to six thousand one hundred and twenty-one and five thousand eight hundred and fifty in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And whereas in twenty eighteen, the FBI recorded the highest number of hate crime murders since it started keeping hate crime data in nineteen ninety-four. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice estimates that there are over two hundred and fifty thousand non-fatal hate crimes annually. And whereas anyone can be a perpetrator or victim of a hate crime, in twenty eighteen FBI statistics reflect that nineteen percent of rape, race-based hate crimes were against white people, thirteen percent of religious-based hate crimes were against Christians, and forty-seven percent of gender-based hate crimes were against men. And whereas in twenty eighteen, Georgia law enforcement agencies only reported thirty-five hate crimes to the FBI, but Ohio and North Carolina, which have approximately the same population size as Georgia, reported three hundred and fifty and one hundred and forty, respectively. And whereas the city of Dunwoody passed a nondiscrimination ordinance in June twenty nineteen, and whereas the state of Georgia is one of only five states that do not have a hate crime law in place, whereas it is critical that all Georgias be protected from hate crimes. And whereas in twenty nineteen, the Georgia House of Representatives passed House Bill four twenty-six, a hate crimes penalty enhancement measure. Now, now therefore being resolved, the city of Dunwoody urges the Georgia Senate to enact House Bill four twenty-six as written, when it goes back into session mid-June, and for Governor Kemp to immediately sign the bill into law after enactment. So resolved and effective this fifteenth day of June twenty twenty.
Thank you, Sharon. So, um, I put forward this resolution, um, as sort of a natural, um, continuum of the work we've done locally in Dunwoody with our nondiscrimination ordinance. Additionally, uh, hate crimes legislation has been on our legislative agenda for the last few years at the behest of Chief Grogan, um, who asked us to put it there. And, you know, a lot of times, people say, well, you can't regulate thought. But as you've heard from some of our speak, our public comment this evening, and, um, you know, hate crime, and, and you heard from Chief, uh, and you heard in the resolution that, you know, hate crimes aren't meant to target just the individual, they're meant to scare, or put fear, or intimidate an entire community. And so, um, I'm putting this forth to y'all. We'll join most of corporate Atlanta, if not all of corporate Atlanta, ask, and other cities and counties, asking the state senate to please get this done, uh, this month while they're back in session. And so, with that, I will take any questions or comments. Stacy?
Um, I don't know if now is the time to make a motion to make a couple of changes to it, but we had some suggestions from, um, Jeff and Margaret Binkley I would like to put in.
Okay.
In section one. Um, whereas criminal offenses occur throughout the United States on a daily basis called hate crimes, where persons are victimized because of their immutable characteristics such as race, religion, and I would like to insert gender or sexual orientation.
Yeah.
And then in four, because hate crime victims are, and I would like to change it a little bit, because hate crime victims are targeted as members of a group or class of people, and then continue these crimes and finish it.
Okay. All right. So I think first, before we can amend it, we need a motions. Let me see if there's any other questions or comments. All right. I don't see any, so I could use a motion to.
Move to approve.
John move.
Second.
Second by Pam. And now, now amended.
So now I move to amend it?
Yes.
I'll start again.
Okay. Right.
I don't have to read again. We'll just go, okay.
Does anybody need Stacy to read the amendment again? No. Okay. Joe, Joe, so it was, uh, moved by Stacy. The amendment, Sharon, was moved by Stacy, seconded by Joe. So unless there's any questions, we vote on the amendment first. Oh, John has a question.
I just want to make sure Sharon has the amendment as it was read.
I'll send her the language if she doesn't. Sharon, did you catch that amendment?
I will, uh, repeat what I believe that I heard in the, uh, Stacy in the first paragraph, after such as race, religion, she wants to insert the word gender.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, or sexual orientation. And then, and the fourth paragraph, because hate crime victims are targeted as a group or class of individual, interchangeable.
As members, uh, are targeted as members of a group or class of people.
Or class of people?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll first vote on the amendment. All in favor of Councilwoman Harris's amendment, raise your hand. Signifying, yes. All right, Sharon, that's unanimous. And then now we're back to the now amended motion. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none, I call the question. Raise your hand in support of the amendment. Sharon, that also passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor Deutsch, I'd just like to say, if I could take two seconds, thank council for passing that. And I'd also like to congratulate the city council for Dunwoody for passing the previous ordinance in the sense of the work that we mandated that the police department do. We, the few depart, or cities that mandate investigations and documentations of hate crimes, and even the legislation at the Georgia, uh, that the Georgia legislature doesn't even mention the investigation or documentation of it. So we've even gone further within our city than the state proposal. But again, I think we are, uh, have stood firmly as a group to, uh, make our wishes known. And, um, I'm very proud of the city council. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Moving to number nine under business items, award of contract for the athletic field lights at Peachtree Charter Middle School. Brett Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm bringing back the, um, RFP and, um, approval for the Peachtree Charter Middle School field lights. As you know, we put a RFP out back in March, uh, received, uh, three proposals for that. Through that process, we determined that Musco Systems was the optimal, um, brand to put out at those fields, which falls in line with the other two lighting systems we have at the baseball fields and at new multi-use fields. Uh, but through that process, we also saw an opportunity to get them at a reduced cost through a source well contract directly from Musco. So what we are requesting is that we, uh, redirect the proposals that we received with our P process and in turn, uh, award a, uh, contract directly to Musco through a source well purchasing contract, uh, in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars, which includes the ten percent contingency fund. The bid actually came in at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which we anticipate to be the final cost. But with the unknowns, we always want to have that ten percent contingency. Um, with that, I'll open it up to any questions that y'all may have.
Anybody have questions? Uh, Jim?
Just to confirm, is that, is that, I, I assume John Gates has reviewed all this and has blessed it, and that this is a, like a state, one of these state purchasing contracts that we can, uh, piggyback onto? Is that what we're looking at here, Brent?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, I ran it past Mr. Gates, and he did confirm that Source Well is something that we can purchase also off of. It's much like, uh, US Communities or Gordian, or any of these kind of community purchasing contracts where it's been prebid, and they have, uh, specified pricing within it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, it's certainly a quality product, and as long as it's, uh, you know, everything's in line with, uh, you know, with our purchasing, uh, policy and state rules, then, you know, let's full speed ahead.
And, uh, John is on the phone. Do you want to, uh, Mr. Gates is on the phone. Mr. Gates, do you just want to confirm that we're okay with this? I think you just, I think you might. Okay.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
All right. That is a confirmation in terms of what we're able to do in terms of purchasing off these various, uh, cooperative contracts.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Stacy?
So just, again, just to confirm, this is a hundred, a hundred percent being funded by the hotel motel tax? Is that correct?
Yes, that is our, our request.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing none. Someone needs to make a motion.
Move to approve the lights at Peachtree Charter Middle School fields.
Thank you. Move by Pam, second by Jim. Any additional discussion?
I will.
By John. Oh, go ahead.
And Mayor, I just want to make sure that the public understands that we are not buying lights for Peachtree Middle School. We have a twenty twenty-five-year contract for nighttime use of those fields, and that field is, um, we are investing in our community, and we are investing in that contract. Uh, so we are not gifting or giving those lights away to a, another governmental agency. We are funding our own programming on our fields that we have available to us every night after six PM and on weekends. So I just want to make sure the community is well aware that the motion is for Peachtree Charter Middle School, but in reality, it's for the citizens of the city of Dunwoody.
Stacy?
And I guess to that end, you know, Brett, you know, hi, you and I have had many conversations about, you know, the programming help to pay back, you know, the cost of lights. I know it's for the citizens of Dunwoody, but, yeah, somebody has to pay the light bill too. So.
Right. And also, Brent, if something were to happen and the school system were to break that lease, are those lights movable?
They are. It would just, at that point, be, we would have to determine what the value of moving them versus the value of the lighting system at that time as.
Right. It's just if they decide to expand the school or something, and they go that direction.
Yes, you, you can. I mean, of course, it's certainly easy to take the heads down and take the arms down. The polls get a little bit trickier because they are cast polls. But, um, yeah, you can relocate them. But, uh, again, we just have to evaluate the cost of doing so versus a new light system.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have questions or comments? All right. We have a motion on the floor. I'm all in favor. Raise your hand. Thank you. It passes unanimously, Sharon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution to surplus items for the police department, and Linda Neighbors is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we, uh, have a request from Pickens County that they are able to buy these vehicles. They are high mileage, and they do need repairs. One of them has a hundred and forty-one thousand miles on it. The other one has a hundred and fifteen thousand miles on it. Um, and the, um, Pickens County is agreeing to, uh, give us five thousand dollars per vehicle. So we're requesting that you would, um, allow us to surplus these, um, vehicles and then sell them to, uh, Pickens County.
Sorry, Jim. I couldn't find my button. Go ahead.
Move to approve the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, move by Jim, second by Pam. Any questions or discussion on this? Uh, seeing none, uh, please signify your support of this resolution by raising your hand. Uh, Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Item 11 is a resolution, I mean, the temporary moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for special, excuse me, for special use approval, permitted use approval, or building land disturbance site fan and design review or other permits for any construction in the Dunwoody Village overlay district. Richard McCloud.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week in the public comment, we heard from Matt Parisi, who spoke on the public comment section about a medical office that would like to use the address 1720 Mount Vernon Road, which is in the Dunwoody Village, but it is under a moratorium. In discussions with them, it's not really a medical office, but it's a stay-at-home, home healthcare service. They just use that as their home office. So in the exceptions in the moratorium, you list medical office slash clinic as a specific use, but you do not list home healthcare service. So if you choose to allow this, we just need to modify the agenda. The moratorium to add home healthcare service.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions or comments? I'll just say that I would have personally thought home health was medical, so I don't, right, I think there's so. John, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to add home healthcare service to Section 3 of the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Jim. Any further questions or discussion?
Richard, can you approve there? Can you state if that's appropriate or not?
Yes, it is appropriate.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. Please raise your hand if you support this resolution. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 is approval of municipal contract for parks and public works. Eric Lynn.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. And Mayor, what I'd like to do is present item 12, 13, 14, and 15 as one item. However, they need to be voted on individually. But what I want, would like to do is go over those items as a group, if that's okay. And so what we have are the municipal service contracts for the next five years. And these were put out to bid earlier in the year and they went through a very stringent review process. The initial review of these included included the Chief of Police, Billy Grogan, also our Assistant City Manager, Jay Van Niki, as well as the department head for each of the individual disciplines, as well as the city manager. So the four of us reviewed each of these items, came up with a ranking. After the ranking was determined for the items for each of the trades, it was then went to a committee to a committee. And in the committee, we had a panel of, of the four individuals mentioned before, plus Mayor Deutsch, John Henigan, and Jim Reitischer are also on the review committee for these services. We had very good responses from, for each of the trades. For Public Works, we had two, two vendors. Finance, we had four vendors. Planning, three vendors. Information technology, two vendors. Permitting, five vendors. In parks, we just had one responsive bid there, which is the incumbent company for that particular trade. So with that, we felt that the market was covered and that the bids that we received were very, very responsive. I'll, now I'm gonna break it down a little further into just talk for a moment about the five-year cost for the proposal. Prior to, prior to soliciting bids, we did do an in-house analysis of maintaining our public-private partnership or bringing each of the disciplines in-house. And in doing that, the analysis says it's, it's more efficient for the city to bring these in-house. There's not a cost saving, I mean, excuse me, to keep them outside. Keep the private vendors in place. There was not a cost savings to bring them in-house for the city of Dunwoody. The we did want to bring in Communications. Communications is a two-person department. And we are recommending that those two individuals stay with the city and become on the city's payroll beginning in 2021. The, the overall cost comparison for the past five years as compared to today is about 11, an 11.3% increase during that time period. The five-year cost estimate is about $29 million, just, just a little bit under 29 million. In the past five years, it was right at $26 million for that period of time. The 2021 costs are actually flat for next year. It's actually a slight decrease of $1,200 for next year. So that was important to us to, especially during these economic times, to maintain a flat cost for the, for next year. The, and with that, what I would like to do now is we'll just, let me just mention each trade individually, which is parks and public works. That is going to, the recommendation from the committee is to go with low engineering for both of those trades. Information technology, the recommendation is to stay with the incumbent interdev. For finance and administrative services, we are going with Jacobs is the recommendation. And then for planning and permitting to go with the collaborative. So those are, that's the recommendation of the committee and of the staff that reviewed it as well. We did go through each of these proposals very carefully, along with John Gates. To be, to ensure that all standards were met and that we, that we have valid bids and responsive bids. But with that, I know that Jay has queued up. He's ready to answer any questions as long, as well as I'm answering, if I had to answer any questions, and John Gates. So if the council has any questions, we would entertain those at this point.
Questions, comments? Joe?
So you want to, are we opening up the questions on, on all the four? Or do you want, how do you want to do this?
Let me ask. Sharon, is it appropriate to take questions on all of them or should we go item by item?
I will defer to Eric, Mayor, just we do want to vote, go item by item.
Right, exactly.
Mayor, if we, we can, I'm glad to answer questions in either format, but we do need to take individual votes.
Right.
Items 12 through 15.
Well, let's do this if it's okay with everybody. We'll just do the questions under each contract unless anyone has general process questions. I'll take those now. If anybody has questions on the general process. Go ahead, Joe.
Just, I just want to thank again, as a, as a relative, a new incumbent of understanding that the, the, I took a huge sigh of relief when I learned that Mayor Deutsch, Councilors Henigan and Reitischer were intimately involved with this. Okay?
Thank you. So I want to clarify something in case the other council people don't know and the general public. Because you know, we're in really uncertain times. And the contracts that we have now are expiring at the end of the year, so we need it to proceed. But Eric, do these contracts give us flexibility, for example, to decrease the size of our staff if needed?
They do. And that's the advantage of, of the contract model. If for some reason the workload doesn't exist and we need to scale back, we have that ability. And we also have the ability to cancel these contracts if needed. But in historically speaking, in the, in the city's history, you know, we have from time to time renegotiated with some of the vendors in terms of, and, and you know, during that time period, it's been more of a robust economy. So we may have changed either a job title or position or added a person, but it also works in reverse. And so we, yes, to answer your question, we have that flexibility.
So in the event that we perhaps might need a position that's full-time, you know, full FTE, we might need less hours, we'll be able to have some, we have negotiating power. We have the ability to make changes.
That, that is correct.
The economy isn't so robust.
That is correct.
For the next year or so.
And, and, yes, I don't, Mr. Gates, do you want to elaborate on that anymore? Or just, I know you're on, you're on the line as well.
Mr. Gates, you might, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Well, not, not much more that I can add. The process was a very, very, I think a very successful process. I was, from a purchasing standpoint, I've been around a while, but I also was impressed with the way that we handle this particular one this year. So we have total flexibility with the contracts. We are in control. We can go up or down depending on what is happening in the economy.
Thank you. And knowing that a city near us abandoned this method because they said it was going to save them money, we did a very vigorous review of cost and we could not replicate what they came up with, correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay. And then on the one, parks was the only area where we only had one bid, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
We've been pleased and satisfied with Lowe's.
What we have, what we have, and we have a very good staff in place.
Right.
Worked hard with the individuals that are there and we do have an excellent staff.
Okay. All right. So with that, Sharon, I think any other questions are probably specific to each approval. So if you want to read the next one, we'll go that way.
The next item is number 13, approval of municipal contract for information technology.
No, we skipped one. That's 12 on mine, the parks and public works.
Sharon, just for clarification, I believe what the mayor is asking, if you'll, if you'll read 12 and then, and then let's vote on 12 and then go to the next.
I apologize.
That's fine.
Back to 12. 12 is approval of the municipal contract for parks and public works.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. I'm making it a little confusing. I'm sorry. John?
Eric, can you confirm, we've only had the one bidder on the parks in the sense of the financial viability? Is that a equitable contracted amount? Is there any reason for us to believe that we should go out to another bidder based on price? I understand you said that we're very happy with the contract, but can you tell me from the cost perspective and was that analyzed?
Sure, sure. Yes. And on both perspectives, the, it was a qualified bid. And so from that standpoint, we were in, in good shape. But also the cost, and this was one of the ones, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's one of the ones, it was, you know, when we ran the numbers, it was very close in terms of the numbers of bringing it in-house versus keeping it outside, but it was to our advantage to keep this outside. But the one thing, and because it provides this additional flexibility. So to answer your question, yes, it's in line.
Anybody else have questions? All right.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Pam. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, raise your hand if you support the passage of this contract for parks and public works. All right, Jim, unanimous. Sharon, thank you.
Now moving to number 13, which is approval of municipal contract for information technology.
Okay. Um. Any same, does anybody have any questions or comments about this contract?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Jim. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please raise your hand if you support the passage of this municipal contract for information technology. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Item number 14 is approval of municipal contract for finance and administration.
Um, all right. Any questions? Joe?
Yeah, so on, in the full packet on PDF page eight out of 262 pages, the finance and admin, it talks about the ranges of salaries. And I just wanted to, I'd like to ask a question about under finance and admin, the executive secretary there in that range, is that an accurate range listing of that salary of 84,000 to 95,000 for this executive assistant?
I'll handle that one. Just to give, and, and both council member and also the public to know, the contracts are proposed with a proposed FTE equivalence of positions in there. They're a lot like a staffing contract. And in the case that the council member is pointing out, there is, we discuss, once we've got down to the final vendor issues that may be on the smaller things. And in the case of the proposal that's actually out there, the, the salary for one position is higher than the incumbent is making. And it's also, there's a flip position of another individual down there that's lower by the same amount. Throughout the entire contract, people leave and go and we true up with that. So kind of the way these are structured is it gives us an estimate for the five years, but the salaries that are listed now are not going to be the salaries next year or the next or two years after that. So what it is, is the, the numbers that you're seeing there are estimates to pull it together to give us a total look at it. We don't necessarily approve position by position on, but in your specific case, there's one that's listed higher. And then there's also one that's listed lower that we, we talked to the vendor that's been recommended and they have agreed that it's a wash and they know when they go to hire people, those, those salaries will flip and be at the same cost.
Jay, I, I'm looking at the, I, I sort of didn't understand what you just said. I apologize. But I'm looking at PDF page eight and I'm looking at the columns. It says executive assistant city manager. And, and from left to right, I'm reading 84,000 and 95,000. But you're, can you, can you clarify again what you just kind of said that it's not really one full-time person or it's other incumbents, or it's not what they would actually be receiving?
It, you're correct in that very last statement. This is not the actual salaries to be paid to the individuals that are on there. It is so that the vendors can come up with a total cost estimate for the package. And what happens during the year, I'm just going to make up a mythical department that we have an electric department out there with five people in it with 100,000, 80, 60, 40, and 20. The vendor may come up with those. And in this case, the vendor that is recommended is not the incumbent. So they do not know the details of what they paid the individuals. Only the current provider knows that. During the year, a person can leave and another person come in with less experience and that salary changes. We true up at the end of the year, the actual amount we paid to the vendor based off of those amounts. So this is a known, these estimates on here, we discussed with the vendor once they were recommended. And there's that position and then there's a position second from the bottom that we, we agreed with, we told the vendor that then that amount is actually too low for what you're going to have to go on the market with. Now, in this case, they just came to a wash. And when the vendor actually goes to hire, it's going to be the same amount, bottom line cost. So you will not be hiring these people at exactly 84, 891. That's not what it's intended to do. It's intended to give a cost for the entire department for the five-year span of it. And then at the end of the year, we true up based off what the actual salaries are.
Okay, I appreciate that, Jay. So I'm trying not to be antagonistic here. I just want to be educated here. So I know, I know we've got, and by the way, for the general public, I've been asking questions in the backend, right? And we've had conversations. So this is just not my first time having conversations. So been reading and studying and asking folks questions on this. You know, just to level set, we've, we've, you've told me that we cannot provide the actual duties, responsibilities, position descriptions as well. Because it's a deals with employer and a contractual rate role. But how would we take an example below there? You see an admin assistant in public works. And that is a range of, that we're 50 to 75, 50K to 57K. Again, that's the total picture. It's not what would be paid. It's an admin assistant, not an executive assistant. And so I'm, I'm looking at those numbers though, and the ranges, I, I understand that, okay, executive assistant may be higher than an admin. But again, it's just the ranges seem quite, quite different to me, quite high.
And also this, Joe, the, you remember, these are service contracts. They're not staffing contracts. So because we're hiring the staff, I can't. So because we're hiring the staff, I can't, the city doesn't get involved with how much they hire the people for the individual trades. That's, they have to hire at market rate. In the past, we've had some positions, for example, code enforcement, that they've had, that we've had to hire, or not we, but the companies have had to hire, to pay a much higher rate than, than a government scale would allow. And that's because of our location and because of the demand. It's a supply and demand type issue. And the contracts give us that flexibility. So what we're really focused on from, on these contracts are, is the bottom line. What's it going to cost the city to operate? Not on the individual trades of any one person. Because as Jay mentioned, they're putting their proposal together to come up with a number, a total number, and, and not the individual numbers. And that's the biggest difference on the public-private partnership for services contracts versus a staffing contract. That if we went out and tried to hire people individually, then we would look at those salaries. But in this, it's a, it's a grouped cost for municipal services.
Okay. All right, well, I, I appreciate the conversation and I'll just close with, again, I appreciate the, the three, uh, Mayor Deutsch, Councilman Henigan, and Wright-Tesher for doing this due diligence. In normal times, just a five-day notice to turn around. But I, I, knowing that, I, I have a big sigh of relief. So I thank you and I'll, uh, turn over to the, to the mayor, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Stacy.
Um, and I asked this question to Jay and Eric and I, and I understand the answer, but just legally, on page one of the contract, it's with CH two M Hill, which is now known as Jacobs. So the contract says CH two M Hill, but we're warning to Jacobs, like, do we need to change that or are we good?
We, we worked with them beforehand because there's one page in the official submittal that's how you would like it to be listed. And when, when I brought it up with them, they said they're in that, the internal debating whether or not to start submitting things legally is Jacobs. So CH two M Hill works.
Okay.
Anything else?
Move to approve.
Moved by John, second by, oh, second by Stacy. How to get that unmute button fast. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, please signify your support by raising your hand. Sharon, that passes unanimously. Okay.
Mayor, item number fifteen is approval of municipal contract for community development.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or concerns on this? This is a new vendor, correct, Eric or Jay?
No, that is, that is correct. It's a new vendor and it's two, two different trades. One is planning and one is permitting. And it, and it happened, it fell out, historically, we've always had the same vendor each time. And this time it fell out the exact same way. We gave a very thorough analysis of both of the trades, the three in the planning and five and permitting. And collaborative was the one that came out with the highest score for both of those.
Okay, and this was, um, anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Move to approve.
Joe moved.
Second.
Second by Jim, moved by Joe, second by Jim. Any additional questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Sharon, that passes unanimously. And I want to thank staff for the work they've done on this. As I had mentioned earlier in this discussion, I take some comfort in knowing that we'll have flexibility in the next few years. As we don't really know, we're still in the thick of a public health emergency, so we don't really know what's coming. So, but I appreciate everyone getting it done during these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
The, we're moving to discussion items, number sixteen is approval of a construction contract with SDNC for the Georgetown Gateway Project, Michael Smith.
And I just want to, Eric, can you clarify why this is under an approval, is under the discussion item? Or why that's listed that way? Do we have a choice tonight?
No, it's, it's a discussion item.
Okay.
We, we had actually moved it from business to discussion. And so it's just, it should just be, uh, just take the word approval out.
That's fine.
With that, thank you.
Confirm, thank you.
Okay. This item is, uh, the long-awaited Georgetown Gateway Project. This is the Shambly-Dunwoody corridor from Cotillion Drive up to Pila Road, adding, extending the Georgetown multi-use path, improving the existing sidewalks, adding landscaping, street lighting and, and just doing a overall streetscape of the corridor. This is a project that originated in the Shambly-Dunwoody, or the Georgetown Master Plan, and also is included in our transportation plan. And, uh, we've been, it's mostly federal funded, so we've been working on it for a while, going through the approval process with Georgia DOT. But, uh, we were authorized to bid the project, um, back in April. And we advertised for a month. We received eight bids, uh, with SD and C Incorporated being the, the low bidder at six million, one hundred and eleven thousand and thirteen dollars. We've reviewed their bid and, and everything appears to be in order there. Just the funding for this project is, uh, five point two million dollars federal funding. And in fact, it was originally four and a half million, but, uh, Atlanta Regional Commission contacted us a few months ago to see if we were still on schedule to, to award this project this year. And we said we were, and I think they were looking for, at the end of each fiscal year, they have money that, for projects that aren't ready, that need to get allocated to projects that are ready so that the money doesn't go away. And, and so they added seven hundred thousand more to our project. So we're at five point two million federal. The county, the cab is, uh, contributing five hundred and sixty-six thousand. They, they want to upgrade the water main in that area from a, uh, six inch to a twelve inch water main. And then the balance, uh, would come from, uh, city funds. So with the project bid is, is well within our, our available funding. The big, I guess the big, uh, point I want to make on this project, everything's in order, we're ready to go, the funding looks good. But the utility relocation is a major, uh, task on this project. I mentioned DeKalb is replacing the water main. Atlanta Gaslight also has elected to replace their main in the area. Uh, and so the, the, the utility schedule we've gotten from all the utilities is pretty lengthy. So even at the point that we approve the, the contract for construction, it'll be a while until construction actually starts. The, the utilities are projecting a, a two-year timeline for utility relocation. Of course, we'll work with them through that process and try to expedite it as much as we can. But, you know, this, this project does have a long timeline.
Jim? Would you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Michael, um, just to confirm, you know, since we do have the county, uh, uh, DeKalb Watershed Management involved, just can, confirm that they've upgraded and modified their, their specs for backfill material? They're still not working on the fifty-seven stone, uh, specification?
They have updated that. And, um, also, I think most all of this main will be outside of the roadway.
Great. Two, two good things.
Uh, John? Oh, sorry. You done, Jim, John?
Thank you, Michael. That's what I was going to go ahead, as far as the roadway was concerned. Tell me, is there any sewer impact, any sewer upgrades? And since the road's being torn up with the water, but now you said the water's going outside the street. So any impact on sewer work?
DeKalb hasn't identified any need to replace the sewer in this area. I don't think it, I don't think it's in one of the areas where they had, have had capacity problems that have been publicized over the last couple of years.
So as far as the street itself, it'll be open. You don't see those streets being completely torn apart through Georgetown. Where Shambly-Dunwoody would be almost impassable, right? I mean, it should be, it's all on the peripheries for the most part.
That, that's right. You know, I mean, there will be some land closures, but a lot of the, you know, other than the gas and the water, a lot of the utilities are overhead. So they're going to just be moving poles further off the roadway. You know, when the city gets into its part of the project, uh, you know, we're not doing a lot of major reconstruction of the roadway, but we do have quite a bit of storm drainings to put in. The storm drain facilities out there are inadequate now and it's pretty flat. So we will be digging up a lot of areas to put in storm drain when the time comes.
Thank you.
Uh, Stacy?
Um, just kind of to ask some questions on the funding. Michael, you said we got seven hundred thousand dollars more because from a, from a project that wasn't ready to go. But this project really isn't going to go for two years because we have to wait on utility relocation. Is that a concern that the funding isn't going to go away? Or because we're starting, we get to hold on to that money? I, can you just clarify how the funding works for this?
Yes, the, the key is when we're ready for the construction funding to be authorized, which we, we are. It's not, it's not really tied to when it's actually spent, but when the, the funds are, when it's ready for GDOT to authorize the funding.
Uh, Tom, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Lynn. So the, in, in the packet, it said the actual construction of the actual, uh, gateway project, we're looking at twenty twenty-two. So, um, that's quite a ways off. When do, uh, we expect the utility work to start with the water and, and the gas lines in particular? And, and I'll just add, my, my concern for, the concern I have is, uh, this is a major gateway into the city. It's a well-traveled road. And, um, you know, the North Peachtree Tilly Mill Project with utility location took a long period of time. And there were a lot of complaints, uh, from the public at the length of time that that intersection was, was torn up and, and, and under construction. Are we going to have a similar type of timeline here? Or is there any way to condense that and make the impact on the, uh, on the public traveling through this area less?
Yeah, I, well, I guess, uh, we're talking two years for relocation, so early twenty twenty-two. But they, um, they won't really be able to start till late this year. The process after we approve the contract is it's got to go, we've got to get DeKalb to authorize their funding at a commission meeting, which typically in the past has taken about two months. The, the, uh, Georgia DOT has to approve, you know, to put together the contract, approve it and send us notice to proceed, which typically takes two to three months. So we're, we're looking at probably fall before we get a notice to proceed. So utilities probably aren't on site till, towards the end of the year. But we, you know, we're going to can work, we already have been asking if the utilities can compress their schedule. And we'll continue to do so throughout the process to try to, try to expedite it as much as we can.
Yeah, anything we can do to compress that timeline, uh, to reduce the impact, uh, I know would be greatly appreciated by the public. I have a second question. Again, since we're not starting the, the, uh, you know, the, the sexy part of the project for about a year and a half, two years. We also know that that intersection or that part of town due to, uh, GDOT projects that have not yet been final determination. If we need to modify the gateway project in any way based on GDOT's, uh, managed lane project or any other projects going on in that area with two eighty-five and, and GDOT, uh, do we have that, the flexibility to do that with this contract? And, uh, do we have the ability to modify the design and the plan if that becomes necessary as well?
That's a good question. We can always, uh, you know, we can't, we probably, it would be difficult to make a major design change, but we do have an opportunity throughout the construction to make adjustments, you know, take things away, add things. That, there's usually a change order process for that. But, but one point to make is that, um, we do have a, a nice landscape, you know, wall-type gateway feature planned for the, the corner, east corner at Cotillion and Shambly-Dunwoody. That's in this contract, that's in this budget amount, but we're not, we're not going to release that for construction until we know exactly what GDOT's plan is. We, you know, obviously, we don't want to build that and then have GDOT come through and tear it up a year later. So that's, um, it's in the contract now, but that's something we'll continue to work with GDOT and see how that plays out when it comes time to build that.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Anyone else? Joe? Oops, you have to unmute.
I already, I got too many cursors going on. I just looked on my calendar, it was February of twenty fifteen that we started this project design. I'm like looking at names that people have long gone. And I hope we're all here when it's finished. You know, we'll have a nice party. On the website, if folks go to City Dunwoody and then you go to projects, um, Michael, just administrative, under projects, there's some option A, B, C, D, design. So I think we just kind of, which alternative are we sticking with? Can we just kind of say which one we're doing? I think this was kind of earlier on, it's kind of left over, um, of what the actual design is approved.
Okay.
You know, so, so if we could kind of find out, if, and if you could send a note back out to us, just refresh the page so we know what's in the final design so we can kind of refresh our memories on that one. And what's really great on that website, there's a photo before and after. You can go and drag your cursor on here and you can drag and see what, what is currently. And you drag it over to the left and right and you see what's planned. It's nice interactive scene of what would be there in the future when this is, uh, comes to fruition. But yeah, twenty fifteen, I'm going back to when this was looking at concept design. Just aside, I think we didn't have the, uh, we definitely in twenty fifteen had no idea we're going to build a bridge across the back end of Old Spring House Lane over to Primitive Center East. I, I'm pretty sure in twenty fifteen, that just wasn't on anybody's radar. Now that we did, um, do, have we tweaked anything of this gateway corridor to accommodate access off of Shambly-Dunwoody going down into Spring House Lane for that trail?
Well, the, the path comes, the way, the design for this project, the path comes out of Georgetown Park and goes down that same side of Shambly-Dunwoody and then crosses at Old Spring House to the Waffle House corner. So that, that would be a potential connecting point there. We didn't, Old Spring House was outside the project limit. So we probably, we don't really have an opportunity to do anything more in this project with that. But, um, but it will get to that corner there.
Right, I, I'd like to think about something that we could potentially look at, low-hanging fruit without acquiring easements and right away and ripping out curb and gutter, trying to just kind of help access to let people know that they're up on Shambly-Dunwoody and there's a, there's a bridge and a path back in there and, and connecting to get to places. So just kind of let, let people know. Do we have any kind of thing currently in, in the mix to just, from a signage or marking perspective?
We have signs coming through our directional sign program, I believe. I don't, I don't know specifically if there's one for this. And the, the north top-in mares are working on the connectivity to get a accessible path. Right now, Old Spring House Lane is, you can take it, but you, if you're coming home on it, you have to be really able to bike way up the hills. So, right.
Right, okay. All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Anybody else? So, Michael, I have a couple of questions. One is when we, to Joe's point about when all this was started, you know, they're taking down the Shambly-Dunwoody Bridge. Is that going to be simultaneous? I'm trying to think of the dates. Are we going to all be working at the same time?
I, I'll, I'll look at that. I think, I know that their, this last schedule I saw, that project was supposed to go to the contractor slash developer late this year.
Right.
So yes, I mean, if they stay on that schedule, it, it is likely that there will be some overlap there.
Okay. And then, um, so a couple of things. One is the utility work, the time it's going to take, is it? One is the utility work, the time it's going to take, is it because it's complex work? The volume of work or just because they're so far behind or some combination of the three?
I, I think it's a little bit, a little bit of all of that. And one of the things is that like for overhead utilities, you know, Georgia Power, they can't really work simultaneously. So Georgia Power has to put in new poles and move their lines. Then Comcast has to come in and move their lines. Then AT&amp;T has to come in and move their lines. So they all, the, the schedule kind of stacks on each other. And if there's, um, I, I'll tell you that I think the lengthiest schedule that we've gotten is from AT&amp;T. And I think they do have a lot of facilities in the area. But if there's an opportunity to compress the schedule, then that's probably where we will look.
So that's probably something we should talk about contacting our, the people that can help us, PSC and all that. And then, um, speaking of utilities, so there's no revisiting burying, right? We can't say since it's going to take you so long, you shall bury your utilities, right?
We, we can tell them that, they're going to come back and say, okay, if you have a million and a half dollars. Or, you know, whatever the estimate is today.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. So you'll, this will be on our agenda in July.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is number 17, Neighborhood Sidewalk Program, Michael Sniff.
That's not what I want to share. Got to get the right screen to share here. Okay, what, are you seeing the slides on your screen?
I'm seeing slides and words.
I'm seeing the presenter view.
Yeah.
If you can swap your presenter view in the top left of your other monitor, the other monitor that has it presented, if you have two monitors.
Yeah, I have, you know what, might just unplug the other monitor.
There's a, anyway.
Yeah. All right, now do you see it?
Well, just launched.
Now we do, yep, there we go.
All right. So talking about neighborhood sidewalk, neighborhood sidewalk program, the cities, since its inception has always had providing a good environment for pedestrians as a top priority. In 2010, the city council adopted our sidewalk improvement program, which has been the guide for prioritizing and building sidewalks throughout the city. Since that time, the 65, we started with a network of 65 miles of sidewalk. And that's shown in yellow here. We've built about 11 miles shown in green and we have about 10 miles left. The other colors are the, the 10 remaining miles in various stages of design and planning and construction. When this program's completed, the, the city should have sidewalks on all, on both sides of all the major arterial collector roads in the city. Except in a few special cases. On school walking routes, most, this project list doesn't include neighborhood streets. There's a, currently a petition process where residents in a neighborhood can petition the city to create a sidewalk district and self-fund sidewalks in their neighborhood. This is a program that was carried over from the DeKalb County Code. And we, we haven't, due to cost, we, I think more than anything, we've never had a neighborhood try to advance a project through this process. About two and a half years ago, the city council discussed extending the sidewalk program into neighborhoods. I think the consensus at the time was that it warranted further discussion. But at the time, the city, we needed to focus more on the progress on the existing sidewalk plan. And since that time, the city has done additional research and put together a framework that I'm going to talk about here for what a neighborhood sidewalk program could look like. And just to put it in perspective, there are about 20 mile, centerline miles of collector and arterial roads in the city. And there's 125 miles of neighborhood streets. So when you start talking about going into neighborhoods, the scope can, can grow pretty quickly. And so we started with looking at some ways to narrow that number down to something that could be fiscally feasible. The GIS department helped put together this map. We started with the roads, the streets shown in purple here represent all the neighborhood streets within a half mile of a public park, school or MARTA bus route. We used a half a mile because that's the commonly accepted distance beyond which the, the number of people that are willing to walk starts dropping. The total length of these streets shown in purple here is about 50 miles, which would take over 30 years for the city to build based on current funding levels. This will be about two and a half times more sidewalks than the current program has in it. And it's probably hard to justify considering that a lot of these streets are short, low traffic cul-de-sacs. So the next cut we took at it was to, to take out the cul-de-sacs. And, and this is those same streets narrowed down to through streets in most cases. And then we did add a few to make connections through neighborhood, neighborhoods that made logical sense and try to hit a lot of the main roads through neighborhoods. The, this, this program here would be about 30 miles of sidewalk, which is more manageable than the 50, but still 50% bigger than our current program. Would probably take about 20 years to build out. So to kind of fur- further narrow things now, we, we put together a framework. Kind of the starting process for this framework is that we, the city would continue to finish its arterial and collector sidewalk program with the goal of completing in the next five to 10 years. And at the same time, develop a similar priority system for neighborhood sidewalks and have a goal of trying to fund maybe at least one neighborhood sidewalk per year while we're still completing the arterial collector program. The neighborhood sidewalks would be rated and prioritized independently of the arterial collector sidewalks. So looking at different factors of how to prioritize the sidewalk, a lot of these are similar to what we do in our current program. First being looking at school, school zones and school walking. The map here shows that we were, DeKalb County provided the maps of what areas get bus service in Dunwoody. The red area here around Chestnut Elementary is the area that does not get bus service. So any of the street, through streets in this red zone would be added to the list. But the closer you are to the school would get higher priority. If you're within a half mile of the school, you score a little higher than if you were a mile from the school. Another factor we would consider would be again proximity to, to the bus system. And filling existing gaps, we don't have a lot of existing gaps in neighborhoods. A lot of the neighborhoods don't have sidewalks currently, but we do have a few examples where you have existing sidewalks here, they're shown in gray and the orange are the gaps that are less than half a mile. We would, we would consider vehicle traffic volume. Obviously, if you have a street that warrants a traffic calming, it probably should get a higher priority for sidewalks, all other factors being equal. Ease of construction, you know, we, it's easier to build on a flat, open slope, especially adjacent to public property than it is to, to where you have significant slopes that might require easements or retaining walls or trees that have to be removed. And then last factor to look at before talking about neighborhood support is when we did our last transportation plan update, the, we did a, there was a GIS analysis done of all the streets in the city. And the, looking at a number of factors from proximity to destinations, to the demographics of the different areas of the city to develop a suitability score for, for sidewalks. The darker brown on the map represents higher suitability scores, which is an indicator of which sidewalks are most likely to be used for transportation purposes. The, talking about neighborhood support. Just as with the arterial collector sidewalk program, there may be some neighborhood streets, back up a second. Maybe some neighborhood streets where the city decides a sidewalk is important to the community as a whole and the public purpose is enough reason to build the sidewalk. You know, kind of, um, that there's just an overriding goal there. For the purposes of this discussion, we were calling those category one sidewalks. They would typically be on streets with higher traffic, uh, close to schools. In the short term, these would be the, the neighborhood sidewalks that the city would plan to fund absent any formal support from the neighborhood. The, the next category is, would be category two, which would also be projects that scored relatively well. And with demonstrated support from the neighborhood, say through a petition process, could, would move to category one for funding by the city. And I'm going to show some examples of these in a minute, based on how we put this together. And then the last would be category three, which would be all other streets that were shown on that edited GIS map previously that did not score high enough to be in category one or two. The proposed option for these streets, though, for council to consider would be that in order for those streets to become eligible for the neighborhood sidewalk program in the short term or the near term, they would need to show support and also a financial commitment to share in the cost of the construction. And, you know, some, some may ask, why not just include the, these category three streets in the city's program to begin with? And the, the thought behind the categories is that trying to balance, we're trying to balance the financial reality with, which is that it would take 25 years to build the entire category one, two, and three list with the expectation of residents that if, if we put a street on, on a sidewalk list, that it would be built in the time that they actually still live, live there. As proposed, we've limited category one to high priority projects that could be funded in the next five years or so. And then for category two, uh, a lot depends on how many of the streets would show support through a petition process. Obviously, if, if a street completes, the petition says they want the sidewalks, there's an expectation that it would be built in the short term. It would get, it would be messy, I think, if, if a neighborhood submitted a petition and it was 15 years before the city could build the sidewalk. At some point, you know, the original petition signers may not even live there anymore. So, so again, we're trying to limit category two to projects that, you know, if every one of the streets in that category petitioned the city to have a sidewalk installed, you know, right? It would take, you know, 10 years or so to build it. If they all did it, if they all petitioned in the next, in the first year or two of the program, the city may have to look for other ways to direct more funding to that to, to reduce the time between petition and actual construction. And what, as you can see here, category three represents a significant increase in funding over the current program, which is shown here in gray. And again, if we were to say we're going to do all those, uh, it would take over 25, you know, 20, 25 years to complete. So that, that's again, the thought process behind, you know, category three, if, if the, if the neighborhood's willing to, says we really want a sidewalk through a petition and then was to say, agree to share in the cost 50/50 with the city, then that could be a way for those projects to become eligible sooner. Just in rough numbers, what that would probably mean, to build a typical 100 feet of sidewalk for a typical lot frontage split by the residents on both sides of the street, you're probably talking 500 to a thousand dollars a year for five years to, for the neighborhood to pay their share, for each resident to pay their share of the cost to build one in their neighborhood. An alternative would be to say, we're just not going to put the category three sidewalks on the list right now at all. But at least by offering the cost sharing option, there, there is a way to, to get the sidewalk sooner if the residents really want it. None of this is to say that as the program progresses, the city couldn't update or extend the program in the future. Just trying to keep from over promising what we can realistically do in the short term. What this would look like on the ground, under the framework we presented here is, here's a list of most of the streets that were on that map previously, that the, the, the streets in green would be the, what we're calling category one, which would be projects the city would try to move forward in the next few years. Two of these are already on our existing list. We moved them to this list. If we, if the council were to enact this program and allocate some funding to it each year, the, the two that have been moved to this list could probably be built sooner than if they stay on the existing list based on ranking. And then the blue, the light blue are the, what would be the category two sidewalks, which could move up to category one if there was neighborhood support. I think, you know, what the, the questions that staff is looking for council to gain consensus on are, does the city want to expand the eligibility of the sidewalk program, the neighborhood streets at this time? Or do we want to continue to work on the, the current pro, focus on the current program? And then if we do want to extend it, you know, to what extent? And what, you know, what role should the neighborhood support play in the process? Should cost, cost sharing be an option or should the projects be left off the list until a later date when they become financially feasible? And I, I have to try to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, so a couple of things, if you'll stop sharing your screen so I can, uh, thank you to council. And, uh, let me ask you, Michael, what you're looking for from us tonight?
Is this something that the staff should continue to refine and put together for, uh, you know, an actual policy to, for the council to adopt? If, if, if that's the case, what we would do is, you know, set the priorities and finalize the ranking and then, you know, put together a petition process and bring all that back to the council as a, you know, night sidewalk, a revised sidewalk improvement policy and a side, and we would have to modify the existing sidewalk district ordinance if we're going to look at the cost sharing option.
Okay. Questions, comments? Jim?
I have a bunch. First, for, for my counterparts, um, I, I think we should move forward with this. I, I also think that as we move forward, as we have seen with I, I also think that as we move forward, as we have seen with other residential neighborhood sidewalks, you know, on the school walk routes, you know, we, we are going to catch some flack over this, you know, that, uh, you know, folks have lovely mature plantings out in the right of way where we wanna put a sidewalk and there is, we're just going to, you know, there are gonna be times when we can't avoid impacting that, and that's not a good thing, you know, we, as we go about this, we have to be very sensitive to that. Uh, I think we did a good job of that in, in, on some of the village mill projects, um, and, you know, we just need to carry some budget for plantings and, and um, you know, putting things back as, as best we can. Second, I think you, you alluded to it, um, speed humps, I mean, I think you don't always have streets that I perceive to be major cut-throughs. You know, some of which have speed humps, some of which don't, but they, they just are major cut-throughs. I think this is, you know, one of the, you know, things about, you know, having staff that doesn't live in Dunwoody, y'all don't really understand the cut-through traffic as organically as, as those of us on council. But I've got a bunch of locations where, well, not a bunch, but I got two major cut-throughs that y'all aren't proposing sidewalks along the cut-through, and those cut-throughs, you know, they, they do have a fair amount of foot traffic and, and I'll cover those in a minute. Um, but you, you did a lot right. I mean, I think, you know, from looking at my district, you know, places like Meadow Lake, Springfield, North Springs, Georgetown, Cambridge, Wickford, you know, those neighborhoods, you know, were, were pretty well done, pretty well covered. But I think you, you really need to be look, anywhere where there are speed humps, you need to look, you know, i- i- if, if traffic in the neighborhood was heavy enough and fast enough that it needed speed humps, then maybe it needed a sidewalk really for the pedestrian traffic. Um, specific locations of cut-throughs that I've got that are not on your plan would be um, from, from Dunwoody Club Drive, Ball Mill, Trow Bridge between Ball Mill and Vernon Lake. Um, and, and really the section of Trow Bridge between Forest Spring and Vernon Lake doesn't need to be on there. That's a very low volume. Traffic-wise stretch at Trow Bridge, that other section between Vernon Lake and, and Ball Mill is, is where you really have the cut-through traffic and where you need the uh, the sidewalks for pedestrian safety. The, the other cut-throughs I see that aren't there, and again, these, and these ones have speed pump, s- speed humps, would be Woodsong Trail, the section of Woodsong, Song Drive from Trail down to Barcroft, then Barcroft, and then Bark, Withmire from Barcroft to Mount Vernon Way, and then the upper section of Mount Vernon Way. And again, you're, you're, you're connecting to our existing sidewalks on Mount Vernon Way, and you're hitting a big cut-through location where, you know, the, there's just a fair amount of traffic because of the cut-through nature of those streets. That's the, that's the biggies for me. I mean, we, we just need to be ready to, you know, to deal with the folks that are gonna be unhappy because we're touching their plantings, and we need to be able to ameliorate that and, and carry budget for that. And, and, you know, I think we, you know, and others may have some other locations like mine where we're not completing, you know, we're not doing sidewalks on major traffic cut-throughs. And that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Oh, John, I see your hand. Thank you.
Michael, thank you for the presentation. Um, I think you've done a lot right getting these uh, data in front of us. The main question I really have is, I think you already said it, if we do absolutely nothing else, we're still five years away before completing what we currently have on our main thoroughfares. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd say at least, so you're five, five to 10 possibly.
So I mean, yes, I want sidewalks. I think Jim's point of the uh, cut-through traffic. Uh, my community here in Dunwoody North would love to have uh, sidewalks on Stonington and get people off the streets and the cars just fill the streets over and over and over again. But that being said, we have main thoroughfares that need sidewalks, and we're working towards that goal. I think we should move forward with the plan. I'm not sure if we need a level three of doing the entire city. But that being said, I do like the philosophy and the planning of putting forward ideas on where we do want the sidewalks. But again, we're five years out from hitting our first residential street inside a neighborhood. Uh, one more thing, Michael, if you could, explain to me ADA. If I had a neighbor, let's say, in a, in a neighborhood about a block away from a MARTA station or from a MARTA bus, and she needed a sidewalk to get to the MARTA station, how does ADA requirements hit the city responsibilities? Is there anything there for us? Has that been brought into consideration as far as our policies and procedures go?
Uh, it's not a factor in, in what I presented here. Um, I, I, I'd have to look into that a little more. Um, I, I, obviously, if we put in a sidewalk, it, it has to meet all the ADA standards. But um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that we're legally obligated to, to build one where it doesn't exist.
I just wanna make sure that if there are laws that our policies meet those laws and possibilities to make sure that the policy is fair and equitable to those who need the infrastructure. That's it, Ms. Merritt. That's nothing else.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, Tom, I see your hand. Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I, again, just wanna echo uh, with, with Jim and John said, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. Um, and I commend you on the work you've done here. Actually, um, just to step back a little bit, I, one of the things I enjoyed reading in Lowe's uh, bid proposal was their, their plan to have quarterly updates on our progress with pedestrian and bicycle uh, facilities for the city, and that was something that excited me and uh, and, and that ties in nicely with this. Uh, one, one thing, uh, I'm just gonna toss this out here, and this may be a little bit off the topic, but I think it dovetails nicely is, is one of my uh, initiatives at the, at the council retreat was uh, for the city to have a, a plan for master trails. And I think, I don't know if this falls into one big plan where the sidewalks are your, are your, your smaller streets that feed into your, your multi-use trails that are your, your collectors, your arterials, uh, much like operating much the same way that the roads do, but uh, I would like for those, it would be my preference for those um, plans to, to be put together at the same time, uh, so that we, so there is a, a, an actual network that works together um, to allow people to, to utilize the trails to the maximum, and also so that we don't perhaps put in a, a five-foot sidewalk where it might be better off uh, in the future for have a multi-use trail. So um, so I just, I just wanted to add that. Um, also kinda piggybacking on what Jen said, there, there was one area looking at the map of the residential um, that I'd like you to just take note of for consideration as we move forward with this. It, it deals with uh, the Waterford area where we're gonna have a new park, and there was no connectivity to that, anywhere to that park. So I'd like um, at least for uh, water, coming off of Dunwoody Club, Waterford, down to Delros, and then that small piece of Delros that would lead you into the new park, um, as well as um, uh, Dunwoody Glen, uh, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Kings Glen um, off of Happy Hollow, uh, because we do plan on having a trail uh, in that general facility for the park, and that would be good, that would be a great connection for the Happy Hollow, that, that portion of town to be able to have a sidewalk to then connect into a trail into the park. And on the same token, uh, Kings Glen, uh, coming off of Fountain Blue, I, I know we have uh, the, the plan, the map called for a plan, uh, uh, sidewalks through Fountain Blue. If that can continue along Fountain Blue onto the, um, I guess that's the western side of uh, Happy Hollow and then connecting to Kings Glen. Again, uh, just for um, coordinating that, I guess, with parks to see where, where those trails uh, might uh, be able to uh, come out into the main road and connect to the park. So that would be just my personal uh, requests uh, for consideration. But um, yeah, as said, I, I, I would like to move forward with this. Um, and, and, and thanks for, for your work on this.
Anybody else? Joe? You can go ahead, Joe.
I'll in all the due diligence in that. Um, and uh, I, you know, we talk a lot about these individual slices. We've got separate plans, we have separate discussions. And I'd like to dovetail what, what Tom had said and, and the other folks, where we can kind of consider a more of a holistic plan. I don't think we need to bring in a full brand-new consultant and do a full end-to-end plan, but if we could drop down and have a separate dedicated document that shows everything about non-motorized transportation, sidewalks, trails, bicycles, all those type of facilities by corridor, and then identifying the type of facility that we would place on this corridor. Uh, and then prioritize. So layer in on that, let's prioritize these things, what we're gonna see along these different roads and corridors. On the, focusing on the arterial and collectors larger, um, I'd like to, like to be able to see that in a standalone doc um, as a minimum, that project list identifying by project, facility by quarter. I'd also like to see crosswalks and traffic calming inside that same document. Um, cause it's a holistic, along with speed limits, um, like see all that there. Um, again, it'd just be great to have a separate policy. This is, and maybe we've have a separate, I won't say a work session, but a separate discussion session, just focused on that, those aspects, because it's so many different pieces of those different plans. Um, one of the things I like to entertain uh, to my peers is talking about potentially standardizing a little bit wider with sidewalk along our larger roads. Um, it's like a bridge between a 12-foot wide multi-use trail um, and the four or five-foot wide sidewalk. So we're doing five foot now, but say if we went to six, and uh, just how much more comfortable that feels for folks and families and kids and folks on there with the different uses? So I'd, I'd love to entertain what it would take to adopt a six-foot wide sidewalk standard along certain corridors that are more heavily used as a bridge before we place a multi-use path or dedicated facility. Um, the last thing I'll talk about is, Michael, if we can talk about that five to 10-year of current funding cycles for sidewalks, um, that's at the current funding uh, levels, correct? That's assuming the current funding level, right?
Yeah, yeah, just projecting out what we've historically spent. Uh, well, actually, um, on average, maybe a little more. Ba- basically, the, the projections I was giving assumed uh, 1.2 million for sidewalks over the next several years and 300,000 for neighborhood sidewalks.
1.2 million annually? Is that what we've been spending the last few years about? Is that?
Uh, in some years, I, on average, I'm, I doubt, I don't think we've spent that high on average, but in some years we have.
Okay, so when we talk about our uh, 2021, I know we're gonna be really constrained with SPOLOST, we all know that. Um, but I'd love to have a prioritization where we, again, if we give that prioritization by facility and corridor, whether it's sidewalks or trails and so on. Um, and then we could kinda look at that when we're gonna start looking at our next SPOLOST funding and cycles. Where are these fundings coming from, right? So I'll leave it at that, but I'd love to see a separate, at least a short list by prioritization out there, um, of what facilities we'd like to see out there. Thank you.
Stacy?
Um, Michael, how much does a sidewalk cost?
It, it depends uh, and whether you have to add curb and gutter or storm drainage, so it can vary wid- widely. It could be anywhere from say a hundred dollars a foot to $250 a foot when you're foot.
Gotcha. And then you had said, if residents want to fund it and self-fund it, it was for 100 feet of frontage, it was somewhere between 500 and a thousand dollars per resident on each side? And is that per year until it's paid off, or how would that, how does that actually work?
Yeah, I would, uh, to come up with that number, so the $500 number would be if it's a hundred dollars a foot for the sidewalk, and you have, so uh, so that, that's gonna cost um, let's see, a hundred dollars a foot for a hu- 100 feet of sidewalk, that's $10,000. Say the city's gonna pay half, so the residents would be responsible for 5,000. And I would suggest that you split that for the res- you know, ea- the resident on both sides of the street should pay that, because they're both gonna benefit. Um, you wouldn't wanna stick one resident with the sidewalk and the cost. So, split the 5,000 two ways, and that's $2,500 each. So over, if you spread that over a five-year tax bill, that's $500 a year.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, I just wanna be clear that I, like, I'm hearing from the other council members, we wanna move forward with this, and I'm, I just wanna make sure what this is. So we're saying we do want to kinda restructure the sidewalk prioritization plan and come up with a plan to put more sidewalks in neighborhoods. So with that, I understand what you guys were saying about the cut-throughs, so kind of tossing it out there, how do you measure, what is the metric to say, yes, this is a cut-through street, and then do, and then do we add that on the spreadsheet and give that a number? And also, I would say, should we add the proximity to swim tennis clubs? Because that is certainly a place where you have a fa- high volume of people walking. And then also, if, you know, we're going by the metrics and, and creating a new spreadsheet of how do we measure the priorities for neighborhood sidewalks, like, I would say a column should be, is it a speed bump street?
Yeah. The, the, some of the streets that were mentioned that aren't on there now, um, remember that the starting point for our list was half a mile from Public Park Transit or School. So we can, we can add those major streets that are considered cut-throughs that were mentioned and kind of, you know, basically expand the list. Um, that, I think a lot of those make sense, so, but the, based on kind of the scoring system we've set up where school and transit proximity gets priority, that, most of those will probably land in the category three category for now, because they're further from the transit and the schools. Um, and the, you know, we could, yeah, we can consider other community facilities like swim tennis. Um, and then uh, the speed humps is factored in there now. If, if it's a, if it's a road that has unusually high residential traffic, l- let me say this, speed humps didn't get a street added to the list by itself. Again, we use the half-mile distance from parks, schools and transit, but if it was on the list for one of those, if it has unusually high traffic or speed humps, then it got the highest rating for traffic, the traffic volume category.
Gotcha. So the speed bumps was kind of encapsulated in the traffic volume. Okay, I understood that. Okay.
Uh, Pam?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Michael. A question I couldn't um, tell on the map because when I blew him, blew them up, it got fuzzy up there in the corner where Shambly Dunwoody, these two, uh, Dunwoody Road, heading to Spalding. I think we've discussed that small road before with sidewalks, and I could not find your answer from previous uh, citizens asking about that road. But could that support sidewalks? I couldn't remember if it ever could.
You're talking about Dunwoody Road?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, yes, it's, it, what, I think we're, that really should be added to the arterial collector uh, sidewalk list.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Could do that as part of this update.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anybody else? So, um, I think you hear from us that we want to move ahead with something, right? A plan and to keep working on it. Are there other communities that have this cost-sharing method?
Uh, I, I've seen it for other things besides sidewalks. I don't, I, I, and I know, I think there are other communities besides DeKalb that have this, you know, you can get a sidewalk in your neighborhood if you're willing to pay for the whole thing.
Okay. And we, do we currently have that written down anywhere that if a neighborhood decided to? We do, okay.
Yeah, it's in, it's in our uh, code of ordinances.
So, um, I think you have good direction. Um, the one wrench is that I suspect that the school system's gonna build another elementary school somewhere in Dunwoody, perhaps? And so that will, the, the safe routes to schools for that will need to, i- i- if, if necessary, depending on where they build it, will need to be considered in the future, but I think we should know in the next few months.
Yeah, yeah, this will be, as the current one is, this would be an evolving list as far as when factors change like that. Yeah, yeah, this will be as the current one is, this would be an evolving list as far as when factors change like that. You know, Tom mentioned the. The the part, the new part we're going to have in Waterford. If a new part comes online, then we would update the scoring to reflect that. The new. You know, I consider a shared use path is kind of a linear part. So. If you build a shared use path and then now you're closer to one of those. Update the scoring.
Right, and and also, though not quite a sidewalk, if we, as we work with GDOT to get the connectivity on. To get the connectivity on against 285 perhaps. There there may be some need for sidewalks and paths that way. So anybody else have anything? So I think you have your direction, correct?
Yeah, one question is, I mean, is this something you want to move on immediately and have in place for going through the budget process this year?
I think that at the retreat, there was a lot of, correct me if I'm wrong, council consensus around connectivity and that included sidewalks. Does anyone disagree? So I have no idea what our budget is going to look like. I mean, to be honest, I have no. Do you what our budget is going to look like this year or next year, but I think to start the process, it's a, now is as good a time.
Okay.
And I think clearly we're going to get back to, I mean, this is our first, we, this is our first meeting full of real work, I think we. And so, but we're going to get back to what we talked about the retreat over the next few meetings. And so I think it's really important and I think it is a priority. So.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Again, I would also like to state that the discussion of connectivity also is the trails, the water for.
Right.
And all the new stuff that's going on, the neighborhood sidewalks by themselves is just one small part of the discussion. Again, I would go holistically, I would make it a little bit and go from there. That's, you know, widen the scope, Michael, and explain where we're going connectivity wise as far as Waterford. Trails, things of that nature, and then we can set policies and procedures from there.
And and I think it wouldn't hurt to have some messaging developed around. The ability for neighborhoods to put in their own sidewalks. Just, you know, in the next few months as well. So thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
All right.
Item number 15, I'm sorry, item number 18 is process for establishing the 2020 millage rate, Linda Neighbors.
Hello again. This is a discussion item and it is. The DeKalb County was a little bit late releasing the numbers. We had originally projected for 2020 to have 1.2% increase. In our sales, I'm sorry, in our revenues as far as property taxes. It does apply to the real property and personal property, the millage rate that we're talking about. And it's, we currently have, and I think for the whole. Cityhood, the entire life of the cityhood, we have had 2.74 as mills for our millage rate. There are some legal requirements and this goes along with the code. Section 4819, the taxpayers' bill of rights that you have to have. Well, if you're not going to increase the taxes, you have to have one public hearing. One advertisement in a, you know, our legal organ. And of course, we'll post it to the website, but this will be up for vote. I don't, there must have been some kind of problem because. Mr. Seconder couldn't get the last two pages of the document, but he did see it on somebody's blog, so hopefully he did get it. But I apologize for whatever happened. And we'll be glad to give you those. So the digest did come in with a 2% decrease and that has not happened before. There was. A legal action that happened. On some commercial property where the values were challenged with the DeKalb County. And the the property owners did win that. So we realized a. A loss where most other people did not, or most other cities did not realize that in this particular year. So we will be posting as required. The five-year history and it's broken down by the real and personal motor vehicle. And then, of course, it has exemptions. So we did have. Very high exemptions, you know, that would be any of the exemptions that you apply for commercially or residential. And like, like I said, so we will have this up for vote. This. This discussion item wasn't required, but Eric and Jay wanted to see this come before you, which I feel is total transparency. That we have a requirement for one hearing, which will be July the 13th at 6:00 PM. And at that point, we would ask that the council votes on that and our recommendation is to keep it at the 2.74 mills at this time. So. If I can help answer any questions or. Anything else that I could. Help try to clear up, I'll be happy to do so.
So I just, if it's okay with everybody, I'll go first. But I, because I just want to confirm that in the past, we've had to have three hearings. Because even though our tax rate hasn't changed, the digest has increased.
Just has decreased.
No, 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 but in the past, we've had to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Three hearings because the digest has increased and so it's a de facto tax increase.
That's correct.
So but in this case, we don't have to have three hearings because the digest has decreased.
That's correct.
Okay.
Jay's here with our, he's our. The cab tax expert.
And the the tax digest, just so people aren't confused, it's not increased, decreased because of what's currently happened. This is the 2019 tax digest. And it decreased because some commercial property owner sued the DeKalb Tax Assessment Office and won. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's that's the bulk of the decrease.
Okay. So with that, I will ta- take any questions or comments? Seeing none. Joe?
So just folks, just make sure you go out to your annual assessment. And you see that you have this large exemption. It'll say CONST-HMST exemption. So you know, you'll see your gross tax amount of the 2.74 mil. That's what we talked about. And then you'll see the net. And my my net, I guess it's the same percentage for everybody, but my net effective millage rate. For the city of Dunwood is not 2.74 after all those exemptions. After all those exemptions, my net is 1.573, 1.573 millage is my net, is our net. Millage rate that we're paying for our property tax because of those exemptions. So. That really is sounding true of of what we're getting in return. And I just want to make sure the the, our residents understand that. Thank you.
And it would depend on the taxpayer, of course, the exemptions that apply to you, you know, as a property owner. You would have different exemptions for different people. So. It it wouldn't be consistently applied. You do have to apply for the homestead exemption. If you are to qualify for that, but there's a whole bunch of different types of exemptions that. I just wanted to say that would probably, you know, make it different than maybe what Mr. Seconders is.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll see you in July. Linda, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment. Ginger, do we have additional public comments?
If anybody has would to make public comments, please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. I am not seeing any hands raised at this point.
Thank you. Eric, city manager comments?
Yes, we will need an executive session tonight to discuss personnel and litigation. And also I will send you the. City manager report in just a little bit. Just a couple of basics that I'm looking at my window right now and I know we have the light the way. Is occurring tonight. Also, in communications, we've been working with announcing about municipal court, which will commence tomorrow. And with a lightened schedule, but to try to get some of the cases moved through so people can have those. Have their cases heard. The economic development, there's still a little bit of activity occurring in the area. With with the high street development, we're still talking to the folks there. There's an interest in in that kicking off, but. Of course, with the current situation, that may be delayed. Michael and his staff have been working with the picnic table project. For the outdoor restaurant seating. The, I'm not going to read through the details of the police, but you know, very, very active or detailed report, I should say. With the police department, you'll, you can read through the details there. We also, I may have mentioned this at the last meeting, we were bringing on a new assistant finance director. They are with us. They started last week. With the city, so we're glad that person is is now on Linda's staff. The, we are moving forward with Austin Elementary School, looking at some of the the old Austin, I should say, just to clarify. Looking at in preparations to demo that building. So we're making those preparations now, also repairing some gaps in the fence at the dog park in Parks and Recreation. The. Public Works, all the work is completed at Roberts Drive for the most part. They completed the final landscaping. And also put down the permanent striping along that section of roadway. Building inspections, about 77 inspections were completed last week. With the building department, so it's still active there with with the construction. Code enforcement is also very active and I'll. Won't now read that tonight, but it was all detailed in your report. So if you have any questions on anything that's occurring within the city or you'd like to hear more information. I'm available as well as several department heads are still online. Glad to entertain any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions? Hope seeing none. Okay, council comments. Just raise your hand if anybody has anything. All right, Tom.
Oh, yes, thanks. I'd just like to make a brief comment tonight and remind everyone of our Light the Way Dunwoodie event tonight. You can see the lights behind me. That's to recognize the class of 2020. I'm not in Vegas. I'm at my home right here in Dunwoodie. So we, there are a lot of ways that you can participate. Obviously. You know, we know that due to COVID-19 this year, that a lot of important milestones were missed by the class of 20. And the fact that we can't gather together in person was not going to be a deterrent to letting us find a way to recognize and celebrate this milestone for. All of the residents here in Dunwoodie that are graduates of the class of 2020. So. I want to thank Jennifer Batcher and Kathy Florence, our communications team for doing a great job and being very creative and putting this program together. And getting a lot of community participation to help out. So basically, some of the community participation we have tonight. Right, I'll start right at City Hall. We have a live feed on one of the, one of the screens here, I think, hopefully if everyone can see it. Where we have the luminaries out there in front of City Hall. If you haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to go to Facebook and see what our Dunwoodie Police Department did this morning. It was, it was terrific with the police cars and they also have some of their trailers out doing lights. Dunwoodie High School is participating, of course. They're going to have 2020 on their scoreboard and they're going to be lighting up the campus. A lot of participation from our perimeter area. Partners, the 1224 building. The State Farm campus terraces, Ravine I wanted to. Even the King Queen Building will be participating, even though it's technically in Sandy Springs, they're they're joined and on board as well. So. Donalds Bannister Farm will be stringing lights and lighting up their tent. Thank you, Dunwoodie Preservation Trust for doing that. And Brook Run Park, of course, our athletic fields will be all lit up, including the scoreboard. So. We we are encouraging the entire city to participate. You don't have to go crazy. It could be as simple as turning on your porch lights or some lights outside. You don't have, you don't have to go crazy. If you, if you'd like to share what you're doing, we'd love to see it. Use the hashtag Light the Way Dunwoodie and post it on social media what you're doing. And obviously, the most important part of this is congratulations to the class of 2020, to all of our graduating seniors. You learned a lot this year, a lot of things you didn't plan on learning, but I'm sure that that will all lead to you being very successful. Later on in life. So congratulations, class of 2020. We're lighting away for you. Thank you. And you're lighting away for us.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Okay, well, I want to echo what Tom said and I was going to share a screen, but it's not working for me, so I'll move on. I also want to take a second to encourage everyone to continue to shop and eat local. I have been calling all or visiting with all our local business owners slowly but surely. I'm trying to contact them all. And, you know, they're very grateful for the work we've done so far, but this is not over. You know, I was speaking to someone today and we really still are in the middle of a public health emergency. And so if you're taking out or eating in whatever you're, hi Liam, whatever you're comfortable with. You know, please continue to support our local businesses. You know, they are always here for us for every fundraiser, for every community event. And so in that train, the Discover Dunwoodie has launched. Dunwoodie Restaurant Revamp, which is replacing Restaurant Week. So and there's not special menus necessarily. Or promotions, but it's just for us to go out and continue to eat locally. So I want to encourage you all that, all of you to do that. We continue our discussions surrounding diversity and I expect to have announcements later. This in the next few weeks about that. And with that, I appreciate everyone listening in and we are going to. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Move to exit to executive session for purposes of legal and and personnel.
Move by Jim, I believe that was Stacy second by Stacy. All in favor, moving to executive session, raise your hand. All right, we'll be back. Thank you. Everybody, don't forget to leave.
Okay, so enough of us here. Sharon, just let me know when you're ready. We have a quorum.
I'm ready, Mayor.
I have the Stacy and Jim is here now. So you're ready? I need a motion.
Move to adjourn?
Move by Jim, second by Pam, all in favor?
Aye.
See y'all next time. Passage unanimously, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Bye.